Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening for the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Montessorino Better Streets Commission Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist the commissioners, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this Better Streets Commission Special Meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a commissioner speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and able to speak to the commission. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide any feedback or public comment. And lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Okay, I will now call to order the special meeting of the Better Streets Commission for Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Here.
Commissioner Lapsic, I believe he's absent. Commissioner Nazarova?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Bilawala? And Chair Lawler?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to orders of the day. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? Seeing any, do we have any more communications? Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight?
There are no members of the public raising their hands.
All right, thank you. Are there any written communications at this point?
No written communication was submitted.
All right, moving on to consent calendar. Does anybody, does a commissioner want to pull this item from the consent calendar, or do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I determine a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
All right, do I have a second? All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nazarova?
Yes.
Commissioner Bilawala?
Yes.
And Chair Lawler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. Item one, Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, approve and recommend adoption at City Council. Staff report, please. Mr. Wimberly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is not opening on my computer. This item is brought to you by the as a follow-up to your previous meetings wherein you amended the language and content and organization of the report. At your March ninth special meeting, you provided final guidance to the consultant who was present during that meeting for amendment to the report. Consultant has responded by submitting that revised report and is included in your packet tonight. The action, if the commission finds the report in its final acceptable form, would be to recommend adoption by the City Council. If you have additional changes, we'll need to have some discussion about that. The K T U A contract is completed, expanded. So we'll figure out what, have to decide or determine how to further amend the report. With that being said, to be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any commissioners with questions?
I don't have questions. I have comments on the report, so I should hold that number.
All right, are there any members of the public wishing to speak to this item?
There are no hands raised.
Bring it back to the commission. Now we may have comments.
Okay, sorry, I know that this has gone through a number of changes since it was first introduced in October thirteenth. But, and this holds a place near to my heart because I live in what I'm calling the island of Montessorino, which is the Vicmel Road area. There's maybe six to seven percent of the homes in Montessorino are on or off Vicmel. And that location is simply not accessible in any safe manner by bike or pedestrians from the rest of Montessorino without doing a two-mile detour. Going all around while we're on a golf course. And so I think that it's important that we have on our master plans, as a master plan is supposed to be the thing that we look at to guide us in making our decisions as a long-term goal to try to solve that. There are a number of ways it can be solved or addressed. It's not going to be by doing something on Kito Road. There's something on the right of way and it's too narrow. But there are possibilities at some point getting access through a property. So that's my first major comment is that both bicyclists and pedestrians do not have a safe way to get to the rest of Montessorino. And if, when I looked at our goals for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, there are a number of goals that relate to that as far as safety and connectivity. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was something that we have no right to, but over time, we might be able to negotiate. And it's something that the council has discussed from time to time, but I believe it should be articulated in a report that at some point, it would be very helpful to connect the city by negotiating with the Loma Serena Association to allow pedestrian, not necessarily bicycle or vehicle of any type, but just pedestrian access because their pathways do provide a lot of connections between streets and the city. And so that would be very helpful. And I would in no way propose it be anything in which there be any pressure exerted. It would be a mutual thing that at some point, perhaps Loma Serena would want some kind of variance or some permission to do something. And maybe it's not now. Maybe it's ten or twenty or thirty years from now. But it would be nice if we had on our long-term goal the idea that at some point, if we work out something mutually beneficial, that we would negotiate a way that pedestrians would also have access to the trails because that would really help us connect the city. So, yes.
I've been on this council for, this commission for a long time. I've never heard of Loma Serena. Maybe because I live on the other side of Highway nine. Can you expand on what that is? So I understand what you're talking about.
Yes, there's a, there is a property. I'm not sure how many acres, but it's probably the largest property that is undeveloped within Montessorino. And it's not just a single wob. It's like fingers going out all over where there's stables and the homeowners that order this property have access to and access to the stables and access to these winding paths that go throughout the city or go in large areas of the city. It's probably easier to show you on a map.
Yeah, when you see like the horse gate and the
So.
Let's not have a multiple conversation here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Good point.
Yeah. It is, it is not in our jurisdiction. It's in the city, but it's run by a board. So we would have to have a conversation with them. I think this item is noteworthy. I don't know if it fits into this plan, but it's certainly before we can ask Dawn if this is something that would fit into this plan, or if this is something that we could bring to council at some point and say, hey, this could be helpful. Because it's really not on the roads, what you're talking about, right? If it's about cut crews and using those cars to get from one part of the
It's about connecting the city and
Right.
And I think that this is a very long-term thing, that it would be just good to put in the plan because it would then keep it in people's mind that this is something long-term that we want to do and we would not want to do it in any way that would cause them an issue. It would just be a mutual thing.
Right, right.
Yeah, this area is a private open space.
Yes.
Owned as a parcel in common ownership by a large number of lots that were part of the original Loma Serena subdivisions. If you go out by one, for example, into the Via Pinto, Via Palomino, all of those streets with horsey sounding names and others were part of the original Loma Serena subdivision. I can't tell you the date, but it was probably in the mid-sixties would be my guess. This open space, as Chair Lawler was saying, was created as a place for people to ride horses and have a barn and so on. I'm not sure how much real life horse activity there is these days. The point is that all of those lot owners, through their Board of Directors, own that property. So the suggestion from Commissioner Omar is to we would, there would have to be some form of grant by that organization to the public, basically, the city representing the public for some conditional access. I mean, not to bring anything, Zico, but the Wimberly Walkway, for example, was an easement created at the time of the subdivision as a pedestrian easement about eight feet wide. That same kind of easement could be granted if the owners of the property so chose to the public. The experience that we had on the so-named walkway is that properties who are near it do not like it. The people who live some distance away and use it frequently, which is a larger number of people, like it and don't want to give it up. And that was the, the whole Jack Lucas story of me recommending to the council to abandon it for a variety of reasons, and the council being overwhelmed with opposition to that and request to retain it, which they did decide to do.
Well, that's very helpful. Does that make it clear then? So this is actually something that would require working with them and getting an easement. And this obviously is, I'm not sure that one, it's likely, and two, putting it in a plan without actually having that conversation with them first might be jumping the gun.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is putting it in the plan, in a way, it's sort of like, we put things in planning on a budget for things that are crazy expensive. This would be something that we would not put the plan as, take this property, it would be, you know, someday if the conditions are right, such that the Loma Serena Property Association would agree consider that. That's that, that's all, just so that it doesn't we don't lose sight of it. A lot of times, history goes on. People like new commissioners don't, don't even know what that association is or even how it connects. So this would just be sort of a long-term reminder, and it might not be our generation, not even our kids.
Okay.
So those are my basic thoughts.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I agree with Commissioner Omar because it reminds me of the situation where the Eleventio Avenue, where we were talking about doing bicycle and pedestrian walk, but it goes through the private property. And I think the final decision was to leave Eleventio Avenue on the master plan. Just as an idea, it's going to be a development of that property, so we can talk and negotiate an easement. So the proposition by Omar reminds me of the discussion about the adventure. I think his idea makes sense. Okay, thank you.
I do like the idea of recording it so we don't forget about it. And so, and so then commissioners on the other side of Highway nine even know about it.
Right.
We should have to be very sensitive if we, if we were to add it, very sensitive about how it was worded. So we don't cause a stampede.
I think the issue that I have with this, and while, yes, it would be lovely, of course, to have some sort of pedestrian easement. I think the difference between Eleventio is that that's still part of Montessorino and not governed by a separate forward. Loma Serena, if you're not familiar with it, it's, it's, it's horse property. And there's horse trails. It's not necessarily, it's, it's sloopy and, you know, maybe kids can, it's not necessarily safe for adults or people walking through. It's not paved. It's all, it's horse trails and they're narrow. They're like single lane bike paths. I am concerned about putting this in this plan without their knowledge. And so I would like to see this plan go forward as is. And I move to direct council to, I mean, I move for us to direct council to approve it as is, if there's any second.
How, how will we remember this or?
It's noted in the meeting and we can certainly bring it up to council as an option, as a, alert them that this conversation happened. I just, I am concerned about putting something in here and when the Loma creative folks or the Loma are unaware.
I agree that, that something like that needs to be done very carefully because it can cause people to upset very easily. Well, on the subject of changes, did you have something specific for your, for your first point?
Yes, that that should be a long-term goal that we be.
Was there a methodology that you can imagine that it would happen?
Yes, we would basically on a annual or basis or so, reexamine what various options are as far as possibly either acquiring property or offering a incentive for an easement. And often that would happen when someone is selling and someone's purchasing a property.
Was that in response to your question about finding a way through to Vicmel on a bike?
Or pedestrian.
Or a full pedestrian. Okay, so it's one or the other. Is there a way that this could be noted in this as a discussion to have in the future, like noted on the plan?
Commission, maybe a place about commission comments or something like that.
Right, right, about, you know, maybe it's obviously something that has to be brought to council and that conversation has to start happening, that they need to build that relationship. That's not, it's not in our purview.
Could we potentially add an appendix of items for future discussion? And then we don't, we could come up with that ourselves. We don't need to hire the consultants again either to add another page.
Is that, is that something that?
Well, I mean, I think it should be a goal, but we don't need to hire consultants to put this as a long-term goal.
What we do to edit the stupid document, I think.
Right, because our contract is over with them.
That's, that's right.
I think I can edit the document.
Well, I think, but I think to your point, if it's, if it's in an appendix as future goals, then it's in the document. And it can be, I'm hesitant to put it as a goal because we haven't had that conversation with, with council or with the district.
But I think that the point of what we're doing now is we are providing council a document that has been reviewed and commented on, and we're going to present it to them. And there'll be that discussion at that time. We're gonna say, here is what we, we agreed to. I don't think that or maybe I'm wrong, but have you guys gone to council with every other thing in this document and already talked with them? So I'm not sure why we would need to go to council if we want to have this as just a long-term goal. And then put it as a long-term goal. I'm not sure if I understand that.
Chair.
Yes.
It seems to me that a an idea without definition doesn't accrue the same status as those projects and enhancements that are currently shown in the plan that follow the city rights away streets. Sort of a lack of definition. The problem with having definition is a couple of, one is to come up with any sort of definition to fulfill, you know, the righteous objective from Commissioner Bilawala takes some study. And lastly, and perhaps importantly, you start drawing lines on a city plan that show a future road or right of way, then the question is, where do you trigger the unintentional imminent domain action? I'm gonna struggle for the right word, reverse inverse condemnation, simply by having a plan that impacts other people's property. Whether I think the original thought of how to get to Vicmel from the rest of Montessorino, going through private property is a case where that would be a concern. The line through the Loma Serena open space, again, not sure what the impact would be. And I would recommend that if you want to pursue that further, that we discuss the idea that postpone adopting the plan for now. Take the idea and have a discussion with the city attorney to be sure that inclusion of you know, unstudied alternative here doesn't carry with it any concerns. Because I think almost as far as I know, the rest of the recommendations have had study and evaluation, if not by this consultant, then by others, for example, B K F on Island Nine. Not to rain on our new commissioners parade, it's a righteous cause, but I think court care is needed in proceeding.
Exactly. Okay. All right. So, so the recommendation is then to either hold off on adopting this and then discuss that and bring that to council to see if that we then something that we could study, or we approve this. We revise this every, when was the last time this plan was revised? In two thousand and sixteen?
It was created by most kind of subway, it was two thousand and sixteen, and this is the first.
This is the first provision. So it, you know, potentially it could be ultimately revised in a few years.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't want to misrepresent. I think you could say in an appendix, future concepts connecting the Vicmel neighborhoods to the rest of Montessorino without going down the road on specifics and be fine.
Okay.
The next step that starts to get
Right.
To be something that we can
That sounds like a reasonable solution.
Can we say that about both his items?
Well, I think it's completely the same thing, isn't it really?
No, it's not. And they're actually very different. And actually, I could give you a very specific, I can turn this into something very specific. I'm not sure how eminent domain comes up because that is in no way, no shape, no form, what I'm talking about. I would be against anything that would even closely resemble that. But I could, for example, write down, write down a plan that was very specific. But this is the kind of long-term goal where when you're waiting for an opportunity, that opportunity will come up and it'll be gone within two months. And if this is just some long-term goal that maybe we're going to try to figure out how to do, it never becomes something that we'll be able to use to take advantage of an opportunity that comes up to create such a connection. So that's why I think that it, it doesn't quite make sense. Now, that is separate from Loma Serena. And Loma Serena has, it's not just unpaid trails. Now, there's, for example, specific places where it's connected, for example, the paths that go to the stables themselves from the end of Cantada and the end of Island. Those are completely paved. So there's a lot of flavors of things here as far as different things you can do, but to characterize it as a bunch of unsafe dirt pathways for horses is not what I'm talking about. But that again, is different than connecting the Vicmel area. And there are a number of very specific things that we can do and look for an opportunity where the property owner agrees and wants to do it. And I think that if we don't have that as a goal, we will never be able to take advantage of that opportunity when it arises.
Well, I think moving forward, duly noted, I do not think though, after all the work that's been put into this, I mean, there is required study and we can't just shove it in here without that required study. And I think the, I like the suggestion that Mr. Wimberly has come up with in noting it as a future, as a possible future, it's then, it's noted, it's in the paperwork, and then we can pursue it with legal, with our, with our city attorney and with council and see where we can go. So at least we can get the wheels moving on that. But to throw it in now after this study has been done for how many years? We really need to make sure that we are crossing every T and dotting every I. So I move that we that we direct staff to add that as an appendix item, as a future as a future possibility. And if you can all agree, that would be great. And we can at least get that in there and get the wheels going.
I'm an attorney and I can tell you what I'm proposing is not a problem. Well, could be my legal opinion. I'll write it down for if you want.
Well, I think at this time, I think at this time, we've had a consultant study everything and what you were proposing, while I think, you know, that certainly has merit. We do need to do the studies and this is not something that we can railroad into this project at this time, especially if we are going to go ahead and know it as a, as a future possibility and put it in, put it in the pipeline to do everything that we're supposed to do with that because that, that, that's going to involve having conversations with homeowners, having conversations with Loma Serena or Loma Serena and their board. I mean, there are things that we have to do and we cannot, I do not feel comfortable putting this in this plan and blindsiding with them, those owners, with this idea that this is what the city is planning on doing. So we need to make sure that we thread that needle very carefully. And I would say that that is the most appropriate thing to do.
I mean, I agree that we have to be very careful and I don't think we can include it in the plan at this point in time. But I want to make sure it's not forgotten.
Right.
I mean, I think those are, it's really important points that should have, we should have looked at long ago and we didn't. So as long as it's in there and it won't be forgotten, I'm satisfied.
Yes, I'm, I'm as well. So I think we can direct staff to do that.
Thank you. So I'm proposing, I have some suggestions about master plan and I'm proposing to postpone the 4-1-1 until this next special meeting. That will give us time to start with the issue that Omar is talking about, to see where the location is and what the property is talking about. And also do give us time to contact the owners. Maybe they are willing to do this. Maybe they're waiting for waiting for that opportunity as well. I think 1-1 is enough to look at this issue. And also about the corrections in the master plan. I have very good skills and I can contribute my time, volunteer to do corrections under supervision of other commissioners. And I think Omar mentioned he can volunteer his time as well. So if there are like some things that we need to change in the plan and they're very minor, we can do it ourselves.
So question, what would you accomplish by talking to these homeowners? Come up with a specific plan? Because it's a wonderful idea, but I think it will take years to negotiate that, at best. If it ever happens, it'll take years, not one month.
We never know until we ask. And I feel like Omar has very strong points and he showed on the map, it looks paved. It looks like the roads are very close to each other. And why not to try to connect them or just put it in the plan? If it's realistic, and I think in one month, we will maybe see if it's realistic or not because before he mentioned it, we didn't even look at that side of the Montessorino and we didn't even consider that adding to our plan. Maybe it's a easy thing to do. I think we need to give a commissioner time. And I would, I'm interested to look into that more too.
If I, if I may, as a former council member, this is something that really lies in the purview of City Council. All right, because they are the, they are the body that would have to negotiate with these private property owners to get the easements. We can certainly, we can suggest, we are commission. We suggest to council. We make recommendations to council. We do not make policy. Right? So what you're suggesting is outside of our purview, we can, we can recommend to council that they pursue this avenue. And that's what we are doing by putting this in the appendix as a future agenda item. But you have to remember, government works very, very slowly. And I appreciate your, your enthusiasm. It's really great. But we have to remember where, what, what is within our purview. So I agree, we, I think we all agree that this is something that should be looked into. It's how do we propose It's how do we propose it to do it in the correct way and my, and I, I do like the idea of getting it in here as an appendix item. Bring it to council as something that they can start talking about because they are the ones that are going to have to seek that easement and agreement with this other entity.
Can we put appendix item in one month?
We can certainly, uh, Mr. Rememberly can certainly add that appendix item to this, we can go ahead and. We can, we can approve it with dependence with both change and he can bring it, you know, we can bring it back. But we can say, we can approve and recommend it with that particular appendix addition. So we can, and take, go ahead and take it to council, the sooner it gets to council, the sooner they have that information.
Can I ask, what is your, when, when you, when we talk about the long-term goal? What do you think in your mind that means?
This means twenty, thirty years.
Right, but, but a long-term goal, it sounds like you only want to have something where you have a specific plan in this specific area. And that's your long-term goal, the long-term goal can't be something aspirational, it can't be something. Uh, where you don't have or know the exact solution to your problem just yet. Does that mean, and I, I'm, that seems to be the fundamental difference of position that we have is. Because we don't have a specific. Solution to the problem, um, you don't want it listed, but I think that if you don't list it, then when that solution. Presents itself, which might only be a two-month window, you will not have time to take advantage of it. So let's say, for example. A property comes for sale.
Right, I don't know, I understand.
Which actually happened. And it happens once every ten to twenty years, well, one, one of the three or four properties that might work. It's possible that the city could have negotiated with the seller or the buyer, say, hey, we'll pay you two hundred thousand dollars. For this right away and you don't want it, fine, no big deal.
And is this property next to you?
It was uh, one house away from me.
So, so it's possible that neighbors could also negotiate for that easement, correct?
Yeah, it's possible.
Yeah. So rather than have the city pay for it, in other words, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I'm not sure how that's relevant though.
Well, I, I'm just. I understand it's, it's, you, you want to be able to take advantage of the situation if it arises, however, I think that at this point in time, the best we can do. Within our purview is to put it in the appendix, bring it up to council. Bring it up to council before their budget and say, hey, this is something we want to talk about, but if it's in the report and then we can bring it to them. And then they can research it and, and go from there, but I think right now, putting it in the plan without any kind of consultation with council or consultation with Lomas Arena. Is a mistake because we're going to upset people. And I think that this is going to be the more efficient way to do it, I, I appreciate Mr. Rememberly's advice, he's, he's had a lot of experience with our city and I would defer to what. He suggests because he's uh, he's been through this before. So I would like to go ahead and make that change and if, I don't know if you're okay with approving the plan with that change. Or you want to just make that change and have it come back so we can look at the appendix, but I, I'd be of the mind to go ahead and recommend it to council with that, with that appendix.
Just perhaps offer the fact that if, if the city were to face an opportunity of developing property. The only way it could require or even initiate. A process to procure property would be on the basis of an adopted plan line or an adopted plan. That says staff you have and is adopted by the council gives the. Uh, city staff the opportunity to include that as a condition of approval. Um, if it is not done through a development process. But rather as an initiative of the city, there again, the. Something as new as, as is described by Commissioner Villalobal would necessitate council concurrence with. Um, a proposal to study that new idea. And frankly, you could even say this applies to the El Rancho connection. Is the council, if you have an appendix that says. Uh, ideas for you further exploration and you recommend that to the council, council can either agree or disagree. The actual evaluation taking into account Commissioner Villalobal's ideas or anybody else's for that matter would be a study process. To evaluate that and then once evaluated, adopt it into the, to the plan as something. To staff, to the community, we're going to go do this thing, I think the El Rancho connection is minor enough that it's unlikely to. Upset Alcoards. The Lomas Arena or perhaps going to other private property, those are significant impact ideas. And I think the idea of progressing it from a preliminary recommendation to council. Um, and even including in your recommendation if that's your wish, uh, further study be undertaken. To connect the Vicmel neighborhood. Through private property and or other opportunities. Council adopts that, then I think it can be studied by appropriate parties and brought back to the commission for refinement. So that it's a commission, a specific commission recommendation for addition to the, then DPMP. Uh, which again is actually implemented and adopted by the city council, that. Sort of process, I think is very important to follow, moving ahead with an idea and, and like you say, you're at the end of the study. A one-year-plus study and an idea now come forward. Well, what happened to that at the beginning of the study is, is some, perhaps somebody's question. So doing it as an add-on in the future, I think has, there's a route to progress with that, that the city council can agree with. Or not, but ultimately their decision whether to pursue that. And anything short of an adopted plan really can't be acted on if an opportunity came up before that.
Well, thank you, I think that makes sense, are we all agreeing on that?
I am.
Alright.
One other comment, uh, that, that may, oh, Commissioner Omar, we could keep this as a standing item or at least a great item. So that we can keep his ideas moving forward, but not stall the plan of as it is now. Because I think his ideas are great and I support him.
The, very, I think that. There's a, and I'm not sure where it's coming from, perception that if we put as a goal. Uh, look for opportunities to connect the Vicmel area with the rest of Montesereno. That somehow is either improper or because it hasn't been studied enough. Um, I don't believe that's the case, I, I think that if we had our city attorney, it would say, if you put that as a goal. That, that is not an improper goal, in fact, it is exactly what a long-term goal should be. This is a goal, something that we want to accomplish. Um, long-term, things are long-term because you don't have the tools at the present to accomplish them. That, that's the nature of.
Just to clarify, I have absolutely no objection to the commission recommending the addition of. A goal to look into opportunities to connect the Vicmel neighborhoods to the remainder, but that.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to say anything against that general goal. It's, it's moving beyond that without. Right, and the council adopts that and they adopt the rest of the plan, no issue. No foul.
That's, that's a fair solution, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's the Vicmel specifically.
Right. Alright.
And then, but other stuff in the appendix, but the Vicmel, I think we can have that as a long-term goal.
Alright, then can we make a motion to approve the plan with those changes or she, or are you going to want to come back with that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the um. The bicycle and pedestrian master plan with the changes recommended for the additional, additional goal and the appendix item.
I'll second that.
Uh, roll call up please.
Yes, Commissioner Chapin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nazarova?
I approve the additional changes.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Villalobal?
Yes.
Thank you, and Chair Lawler?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Play that back and say, if we added to the report or if, if, if your recommendations interpreted to mean. Adding to this report an additional appendix of future goals.
I, I, my understanding was that we would add the goal as a long-term goal with the other long-term goals of connecting Vicmel. With the rest of the city.
Well, it was, it was looking into. Looking into, so, yeah, so basically instigating the, um, the research piece of that, looking into connecting Vicmel.
Which other goals, can you guide me to a place in the report where.
Where that would be.
You're trying to add it.
Yes, if you look on page thirty-two. Of the master plan, page forty-six of the uh, meeting packet. Uh, you can see there's a list of, on page thirty-one.
Is it forty-two?
That's right, it's, it's, uh, it's forty-four, you're right, forty-four, um. On the plan, I think this is long-term.
Uh, forty-five is long-term goals, forty-six.
Page twenty-six.
Wait, that's no, that's multimodal order, you're right, you're right, forty-four.
So on page forty-four, there's short-term pedestrian.
And then there's long-term pedestrian projects.
Okay, so this would be.
I wonder if we can and um. You know, like asterisk, do, do you put it in that or do you put it in the appendix as additional long-term goal?
Well, I, I, this, this is what I thought we were proving is to put it here. Um, that way it, it is part of what people look at, appendix, appendices are designed to not be looked at.
So it would be at the bottom, so, so, so wait, say under Reg, Ridgecrest, it would say, um.
Well, under Dave's Avenue Bicycle, actually.
On page forty-four, under long-term pedestrian projects, under Ridgecrest, since it's, it's not an actual project yet. Would say Vicmel, um, potential, you know, look into, you know, potential uh, opportunities to connect.
Yeah, Vicmel connection.
Right. Look into potential Vicmel connection.
Yeah.
Um, but there's no monetary piece to that, so it really is a study piece. So that's where.
Then the monetary pieces are estimates, so we could.
Right, but you would just asterisk it and just so that we know that it's, it's not something that's actually been sussed out. You know, make sure that this is not an actual action item, that this is, this is a potential action item, so we need to make sure that that's very clear. Because it's not something that was discussed more. Given to the consultants about.
And we wouldn't even know the amount until the opportunity arose.
Right, so that's why, I don't just, yeah, exactly, so it's just more of a just, just make sure that it's, they know that this isn't something that's actually in.
So the motion is interpreted made to modify table four dash one. Yes, term projects, adding an additional line called. What would you?
Big cell connection.
Research. Yeah, research Vicmel connection. And I think the word research is very important in there, so that's the action item.
So there's, if you go over the top of that table, there's a series of columns.
I don't know if you'd even have to, I would say enhances safety. Improves access to key destinations, it doesn't close network gaps. Um, but again, since it's an item that we haven't discussed, I don't think you really need to mark any of those because it's to be, it's to be discussed and investigated. Right?
It's the commission's call on what to do, how and where to do it.
So is the long-term pedestrian project goal, we have El Rancho Avenue, uh, already listed and it has the estimate. Uh, but that's the road that, as far as I understand, that's the road that we couldn't develop because it goes through the property, right?
So, right, that was already on the plan, that was already done for the consultant, so we're, we're throwing in something new that we have no idea how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, no.
Right, and, and we haven't even discussed it yet.
Can we leave the estimated cost blank and just?
No, I think this is really important for.
Uh, no, for the, for the project that Omar is proposing.
We're going to leave it blank.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're not going to attach a number to it because we don't, we don't even know what that project is or if that's something that's feasible. So we're just putting it in there as a place item. Um, for, for review by council, uh, to explore these possibilities and then once. The council comes back with us with a yes, let's do it and then we can get the ball rolling and then we can ultimately get the numbers when that time comes. But at least government works slow, so we have to get the ball rolling.
We will never know the numbers, that, that's one of those things where you actually don't know the number until.
Until the feasibility, until the feasibility is explored at least, so, um, okay. Is that, are you clear then? And then, then we, yeah, I guess that's really.
So just the, the left-hand most column will have that phraseology that research Vicmel connection.
Yes.
Okay, that's true, except we're trying to figure out how to modify this, the graphics here, but experts are in the.
Yeah, alright, alright, okay.
Also regarding that, on the master plan on page thirty-seven, we have half of the page empty and that's the section. Was named Community Outrage. Uh, and everyone from the community, you know, who was able to give a feedback during the annual picnic last year. Yeah, their comments and photos were included in, in this plan. So we can potentially include the graphics or like the mentioning of Omar's project to that page.
You know, I think we already had a motion, we've all agreed, so I don't, it's, the page was intentionally left blank, I think there's enough information in there for, for council to have a very clear direction of what. The plan looks like.
Sure, just the proposal.
Yeah. Um, okay, are we ready to move on then or are you still? Percolating. Alright. Are you ready? Okay, moving on to item number two, MTC Street Sabre Report. Really want to give us a report on that?
To talk about bicycle pedestrian plan.
That's what we just did.
But you only hear his proposals.
We did. So I'm, I also have proposals about. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, so I don't mean to interrupt, uh, so it did seem that you guys had a discussion and a motion. That was already passed, um. Do you, at this point, I think.
Suggestions to the plan, uh, and.
So, so typically, when, so after we usually open it up for public com- comments, once we've closed that. Uh, Chair usually will allow for discussion to commence amongst the commissioners. After that, when there is a motion that's been made and a second has been followed, um, if we proceed with the vote. The topic is then wrapped up and we move on to a second discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Nazarova?
Is it possible if there is a misunderstanding for us to open up, uh, to public discussion? Again, and then have another commissioner make comments?
Typically, it's only one time that we open, as far as my understanding. Um, so I, I'm, because I, just because I'm seeing the way that it's happening right now, it seemed that you guys were in active discussion. Gave staff directions in regards to this and, um. Don, can you let me know from, I, I just want to make sure that from my end, that's the way I observed it, that you got direction, the motion was taken, passed?
My, my hearing was the commission, there was a motion before the commission to adopt the plan. Recommendation to the city council to adopt the plan with an amendment to add, um, Commissioner Villalobal's. Uh, connect the Vicmel research con- connection of the Vicmel neighborhood or research Vicmel connection. Into that table four, so with that one amendment, what I heard was the commission approving the. The plan with recommendations to the council for adoption.
That was my understanding from my side as well. That's why the moving on to the next item was appropriate for Chair to proceed with.
Sorry, procedural misunderstanding, so why don't we do this, why don't we go on to everything else? Um and then we can, I guess, potentially at the end of the meeting come back to this. And listen to your comments, so we can get through the rest of the meeting. Okay, all right, so moving on to item two, MTC Street Saber Report.
Commission has requested in the past to receive updates, which are generally not always. Provided monthly by MTC of the streets pavement condition index report. The report that comes to the city is made up of typically these two pages that are included in your packet. One that has the um. Has the PCI number as it is determined from algorithm. Uh based on a physical and actual evaluation of pavement. That was conducted in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. The city's uh pay uh street network was evaluated and that. Uh the recommendation or the findings of that report became the base year PCI. Um the company that does this uh monthly report for MTC has an algorithm that. Math calculates what the deterioration is on those streets. Um without having any treatment. Um and so gradually over time, the algorithm will reduce that PCI if nothing is done. Um it every two years, the city has the opportunity to. Uh apply for an MTC grant to conduct a new pavement evaluation. The next opportunity for that uh is in twenty four, twenty five. So this report again is an interim month by month report um. Of the information that the uh. Uh MTC has required or called for their consultant to generate. So I don't claim expertise on what's going on with the report, the thing that's most simple is the PCI number. We're still at about seventy, which is relatively good, even though we would seek that to secure our number. I spoke to the consultant that did the report earlier today and with a mind to. Trying to have them do a uh select street update of the data in that in their model. It became a complicated conversation because they're very structured. And geared to follow the MTC protocol, so. Uh updating the the four streets that we actually repaved last fall. Would give us a better PCI overall, but to just evaluate those streets wasn't permissible. So we have to use our imaginations, I guess, to offset the. The deterioration curve with recognition that in fact by. Uh grinding and overlaying Alexander, Lurin Canada. Uh half of Greenwood and Austin Way. In fact, improve those, the ratings of those specific streets from what they were in twenty two to one hundred percent. The influence on the overall population of ratings, however, I, there's no way I can get that for you. Uh by way of background, so my purpose here was just to give you all a copy of what. The city engineer's office receives uh and try to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for commissioners?
I I have one question, um maybe it's only the biannual version of this, but there's a version that. Has the PCI for specific streets.
Your report that was completed in twenty two, May of twenty two has that.
Yeah, and I I would think that would be one of the drivers behind the last segment on our agenda under new business. So it just seems like it would be good useful information for us to look at if we're gonna discuss. Well, later in the meeting, what streets.
Yes, in fact, the streets uh listed in that staff report are ones that are called for to be done this next year. That's where I got those.
All right.
So in the future, can I request like this for, you would also include at least a soft copy of the. The back of the version that has all the streets listed. There isn't kind of trivial thing.
It's a big report, so it would be a soft copy there. It has lots of sections, um perhaps you're thinking of one particular one, but. Maybe it would be worth my send, I I'm happy to send you that report. And to all commissioners, if you have interest, so you can see the entirety and let me know what, how deep into the weeds you're interested in going.
I- is there a section on the report that has sort of various, I think, ask for, which is just shows the streets that have the worst PCI?
Well, each street has a PCI, so the answer, I guess, is yes.
I mean, is 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 there like a table maybe that's i- is in the report that's sorted from best to worst, or is it?
I can't answer the question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think there was original documents somewhere that had the original PCI measurements of our of our streets, but what's really great is that. Even, you know, we're at seventy and I know the goal that city council had was to get us to eighty five. I think, which is far better than most entities and we're already in the seventy five percent hell rate, so we're doing a great job. And I really like seeing this progress because I know when our street started at Blanchard, it was like at thirty, I mean, it was terrible. So um but yes, there there was something that originally had all of those numbers. Um so I would imagine somewhere in the annals we can find, we can find that.
Well, like you said, there is a report that the city received from the consultant in May of twenty two. That has probably more detail than you'll ever be interested in reading, but. And I certainly will send you a copy of any other commissioner. Okay.
Okay.
But that report is used to determine primarily what.
Well, that's one of the things it does. Again, it gives an overall rating because. MTC does and requires for that matter, different things depending upon where the community's PCI is. If if you're seventy or better, then you can do preventative maintenance. If yours below seventy and above sixty, you can only do minor correction. If you're below sixty, then you have to do major reconstruction, and if you're below twenty five. You gotta completely rebuild the street, so that they have rules. That then affect the funding that the the city receives and how you can spend that money. You lose discretion the worse your worse your PCI is. So we're in the, as Commissioner Hall was saying, in a better category now. Uh and so when we do our, because we will have at least two years of. Doing significant pavement improvement projects, our PCI should climb the next time it's officially calibrated. Or calculated.
All right, thank you.
I have one more question. Does does this, do you happen to know if this contains um streets, would it be nice to know that they're maintained by the state or county?
It it would conclude Ridgecrest, I'm pretty sure it would not include.
Would include Ridgecrest, which we don't.
Well, but yeah, that's true, but I don't think uh our consultant or uh MTC. Take that into account, it's just a city street, how it gets maintained is, if you go hard business. And it's not in very good shape, is it?
That's a tough one. All right, thank you. Then moving on to item three, um C Click Fix Report.
Um Chair, I'm sorry, since it's um on the agenda, would we like to just open it for public comment, just in case?
All right.
Just for the record.
Public wishing to speak on item two on the MTC Street Saber Report.
No hands are raised.
I will bring it back to commission, thank you very much. Item number three, C Click Fix Report, status report.
As the commission is aware, some years ago, the city adopted and began to use a. Uh cloud based system called C Click Fix. As a way for the public to communicate its observations of problems with city infrastructure. The uh. That system works in a in a manner that when a. Complaint is registered in the system, it is assigned to a staff member, a staff member is notified of the report. Uh and then by policy and practice. Uh reads it, reviews it, acknowledges it, investigates it and determines how it can be resolved. That information, as it's uh incrementally acquired, is added to the C Click Fix. Uh system and people who use it, I think we may have a commissioner or two who have used it and can tell me. Exactly how it works on the user end, I've only been on the, you've got a new problem, Don, and um so. Again, that's uh. The report that's included in the packet is available from the system. I know Commissioner Bill Wallid indicated, he he thinks it's the result was bogus. And it may not be accurate or correct, but it is what the system spit out for the four year period. Indicating that we generally responded to and. Um addressed reported problems. Uh I I do know that my predecessor, Ms Khan, did a a excellent job of creating a special report. Where she included the content from each and every report in in the spreadsheet provided to the commission. I apologize that her Excel skills and time available exceed mine in both counts, so. The only thing I've been able to do is go to the system and see what report can be acquired from the system, that's what's in your packet.
Okay. Thank you, any questions?
I have some comments.
Uh we'll go open it private first and then, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No hands are raised.
All right, back to commission, commission.
I I had spoken with Don earlier and uh what I told him is I. Pretty sure this report is wrong, simply because I had an issue. Uh around two thousand eight, it took like three years to solve, so eight point eight days for puddle or pavement issue couldn't possibly correct. But what I think is that this is, uh the report is actually not right. It says from twelve three one two thousand seven to four one twenty twenty three, that's a fifteen year period. Which theoretically only forty three complaints came in. That number has to be wrong.
It is, we we did not and we did not actually install C Click Fix until at least twenty twenty. Right, so. Nice, nice catch.
That uh yeah, that couldn't be right, but then something I just wanted to ask the other commissioners was. How many of you have this app installed on your phone?
I do, and I do it.
Have you heard of it? So it's called Fixit Monastarino, and I I think perhaps it's not our our job. But uh one one thing that would be nice is if the city could let residents know about this, this app, it's kind of a nice app. Um and if you do some searching, you can actually find uh what it's called on our webpage. And uh so i- it's it's hidden. Uh our our link to it, our barcode is is actually expired on on our city's webpage, but it's a useful thing to check out.
May I ask, are you talking about the same thing or something different?
This is the same thing, this is the the, it's it's called Fixit Monastarino, this app.
But it's it's the C Click Fix app.
Okay.
It's just called Fixit Monastarino on your phone.
Okay.
Um and when we, when it first came out, we we sent it out in communications to the city, but it it is underutilized, absolutely. So I I agree with you, we need to, the council and and staff, maybe we did get them. Get it up on the website, update it and get some more communications out to the public on that.
I would like to say though that I feel like I saw it advertised several times. And I was well aware of it, and I did use it, I couldn't remember if I loaded the app or did it out of web interface, but. Um my experience uh was quite good.
Yeah, I had a very pleasant experience with it, maybe it's underutilized because we don't have a lot of problems, but. In any case, it's always good to make sure people know it's out there.
You have to use the app to record or?
Well, the app allows you to take a photograph of it right away, so yes, it's it's all through the app.
There is no web interface.
So you're right, right, so you just like I see a puddle and I take a picture of it and I send it. And I get a notification right away that it's received and then within a couple of days that it's been resolved, so it's been. So merciful, so.
Well, somebody's got away because I'm continuing to get periodic reports, I mean, most recently. A hedge encroaching in the sidewalk along beige avenue on the north side near the school. Um which you don't look at it the right way, it isn't as noticeable, so someone with. Then I tried walking alongside the edge and couldn't without going. Going exactly, going into the street. Another was a uh pavement excavation PG&E did in twenty twenty one on Blanchard. That hadn't, never been repaired, so. Um again, those were both valuable information because I hadn't been by that home to look in that. Area and they're both good catches and I'm in, I'm in pursuit, I mean, it's gonna take a while in both cases, I think, but. So I, it's a good, good system and uh some people are definitely using it.
All right.
I will, was one of the commission's request to, or Commissioner Bill Wallid, we look into. Doing something with the city website to make this app available, downloadable.
Well, no, after, well, one, one thing is that the city's website is wrong, the barcode on our page is expired, that that links to this, but. Um after I spoke with you, I realized that it's not um. It's not up to us, we can maybe make a recommendation perhaps, um that's more the city. As far as meaning.
That the website portion of that, I can definitely uh work with one of our admins to make sure that is up to date on our website. So thank you for that information.
The app's awesome.
My my last comment, I like, I understand Don doesn't have time to do a custom report for us, but if you happen to stumble across. Custom report like Jessica.
Oh, yes.
But if you happen to stumble across the way to make it spit out um more detail. Um that would be interesting, I believe.
And and a lot more helpful than this.
Yeah, without adding any extra work.
Well, I I asked uh one of our admins to research that, she spent quite a bit of time. Talked to the purveyors of C Click Fix and was unable to find anything like. The details, so I think it has to be him done somehow, uh again, I apologize for my limitations.
Well, thank you for the report though, that's good to see, the numbers are there. All right, thank you, then we're gonna move on to item number four, Status of Highway Nine Gap Project for Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement.
Thank you, Chair, or the. Um situation with this project is um. Unfortunate, I would say, um spoken recently with our consultant, BKF Engineering. Who's been working on this for several years. Um a- as outlined in the uh in the staff report. Uh a number of things have come along, gotten in the way of progress and. As things have delayed, Caltrans reviewers have escalated. Uh their review with respect to higher and better standards. Um the current requirements that they're imposing on our designers to close this gap. Are more stringent than the ones where we built either side of the gap. Um and so inflation along with those additional requirements has increased the cost. Uh up to about a million one from something like six hundred thousand dollars. Uh and they required that our consultants engage in. Um submitting material through a different Caltrans process involving different reviewers. And with its own timeline, to navigate that. Um the BKF would require an additional roughly eighty thousand dollars to uh to do that. It would take at least six months. Um and the, there's not a hundred percent guarantee that we would be successful. The um. Uh consultant BKF, who's very experienced in dealing with Caltrans. Indicates that they feel we have a ninety ninety five percent chance of succeeding in that. Uh the question though, as a. The question though, as arisen in staff discussions, does it make sense to sink more money into a project we can't afford to build? Because as a related matter and as the commission has previously discussed, our, uh, just as a very capable attempts to secure grant funding through the MTC O-Bag program for both the Dave's Avenue project and the Gap project were not successful. There will be a future O-Bag cycle, but one starts to ask the question after repeated attempts and assurances, which City Manager Leonardi has had from elected officials. That money would be forthcoming. In fact, even today, none has. So the dilemma is spend more to get to a place where we have to chase a million two or something of that amount or not. So by presenting this to you, I'm soliciting commission comments, thoughts, input and direction, if you're inclined, on how to proceed and what to do with the situation with which we're faced.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
One question is, can you just spend just a couple of minutes talking about this here process? I've never heard of that.
Nor have I. BKF had, it's a process that's necessitated when standard criteria for a project are not met. Whether it be the width of the walkway, the width of the shoulder, both of which were not, I mean, if you're gonna build a brand-new highway, you'd have to abide by these new standards. And of course, that's not what we're dealing with. Caltrans has pushed and in fact, the consultant has redesigned as indicated in the exhibits, further intrusion into the hillside, which means a taller retaining wall, which makes more money, which is one of the reasons that the, the cost has grown for this. But I'm sorry that I cannot give you any more chapter and verse except to say that deer is new and it's because the facility would not be of the standard criteria.
So you attached very interesting graphics to that report. And my proposal was to include those graphics into pedestrian master plan because we discussed the project on fixing the gap a lot. But our master plan is like in, in visual graphics, well, then.
Okay.
And my suggestion was to do it as an appendix.
We'll talk about that at the end. So let's get through this. If you're gonna talk about your, your changes to your master plan.
No, it's not the changes, it's the graphics that we just discussed.
Right, that we're talking about, but what we're trying to do right now is discuss what to do because of this cost, because of the fact that it's gonna cost us more money. We're only focusing right now on this. We're not talking about the master plan right now.
Or not before, right?
Yes. So, so when we come back to that, yes. So it's just procedure. So we are talking about, okay, so we're just talking about the situation that we find ourselves in right now with respect to Caltrans and this project. And whether or not we should pump more money into paying for a consultant to go through the process when the money may never come to us.
So my proposal is at least include it into the master plan because we have already done so, so much work about this project. But those graphics, I, I've been, it's my third commission meeting and I see them first time. That, that's why the proposal is, yes, we couldn't get funds for this.
Do you have any questions about what's happening right now? Do you have any questions with respect to the funding or the process that we're trying to go through?
Yes, I have a comment.
Okay, so we'll wait for comments after.
Okay.
Commissioner Omar, do you have any?
Thank you, Chair Lohr. Uh, no, actually I don't have any questions. I think that the report was very open.
Okay, okay. Um, then I will open it up to the public for any comments.
No hands are raised.
All right, back to commission. So, uh, we are, we are definitely in a sticky ricket here. What are our options? But I mean, honestly, what are our options at this point? Because we've been talking about this project for such a long time. And while I, if, if we don't spend the money going through the process, are the plans that we have right now suitable for when we do have the time to go through it again? Or do?
Well, we need from Caltrans approval of the design and an encroachment permit.
Okay, so we have to pay them, pay B K E to go through the process to get that.
BKF, yes. That's the eighty thousand dollars for BKF to get us what we need to go build basically.
Right, okay.
If we have the money.
Right. And what, and what you're seeking from our commission right now is what are our thoughts on that?
Well, is it your thought or recommendation to proceed with the new process extending the additional funds? And, and look for the grant opportunity.
And are these funds coming from?
To pull the plug and.
Are these funds coming from funds set aside specifically for, uh, street maintenance and?
Yeah, as we'll talk later, it's really all one bucket of money for streets.
Because my, with this, with this kind of money, this is something that should go before council. And I know that this project has been, a lot of people want this fixed. So I'm wondering if this is something that we should seek. I mean, ultimately, council's gotta decide whether or not they're gonna spend money on this.
Well, I think your, your comments tonight would be heard by staff and your recommendation included in the budget recommendations that go forward. So if, if you're a go, the budget proposal, at least out from my desk, headed upward, would contain that. As you see in the budget calendar, and we'll talk about in a bit, the council has a couple of steps they go through in looking at staff budget proposals. So they, and they can make whatever decision they determine appropriate.
How much money have we sunk into this so far? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not.
You know, because then again, that's money that's wasted if we don't, if we just sort of drop it, is, is my, my concern. I'm just weighing on the fact that this is something the residents do want. This is something that's gonna benefit our residents. Obviously, it's up to council to decide, but I, I'd hate just to put this on the sidelines, especially if we have a chance of being approved. But then we gotta chase the funding. But at least if we have the approved plans, then we can ultimately get that funding at some point, right? So.
There's no guarantees.
There's no guarantee, but if we have plans set ready to go, when and if we do get that funding, we're ready, we're, we're ready to act.
That's our concern.
Yeah, I have a question. The, the current plan, does that include the silliness that you described to me, like a ridiculously wide sidewalk they were requiring? Or does the deer process, is that to get around that?
The deer process gets around that.
Okay.
Well, some of that, I mean, the, the revised, most recent revised drawings, if you look at the, what's in your packet, and it's got all the red over it, that's the most recent version by BKF. And it has wider sidewalks than the original version.
But in other words, the deer process wouldn't hold us to all of those requirements then, right? It would sort of give us a little bit of flexibility.
Whatever gets approved by the Caltrans through the deer cross, we will have, we can only build that.
Right, 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 right. Okay. Any other thoughts?
I, another thought is that we're kind of doing Caltrans work for them because they own this road. I mean, what are the chances of down the road, Caltrans working on the road and us demanding something? I have no idea whether that's reasonable.
That's exactly the ones that I was about to say because on Caltrans District Four Pedestrian Plan for Bay Area, they have this road marked that it's on their plan and they're working on it. And it's on the website. I have a link to it. You can take a look. The whole road, the highway nine is marked as, it has second priority out of three. So it's not the top priority, but they have it on the plan and they're working on it. And my question is, why Montesina isn't, it has to invest money to do this project with, with highway nine? And it, it, it's Caltrans project and we couldn't fix anything without them. We need permits. And it's on, it's exactly what you said.
What, what is this project that you're referring to? Are they doing all of highway nine? Are they doing our strength of it? What, what exactly are they planning on doing?
I asked to send you a link on the emails. It's District Four Pedestrian Plan for Bay Area. It's on Caltrans website. I've been mentioning it during two meetings in the role. And it's still in progress and they haven't finished it, but the goal is to finish it this year. And it can be changed and we can add comments and suggestions to Caltrans directly. And they have emails and phone numbers of at least three people who is in charge of that. So you can contact them and ask. Does help, help going or do you submit our plans that we've been already working on? Because on their plan, it says zero input from residents or from the city of Montesina. All right, well, that says on that plan because no one contacted them about that. So I was wondering, how do you have to project separate their work in this? And we are also working on this, investing money into research and trying to get those.
Now, that's a great question.
I would really appreciate if you could email to me a link to get to that site.
Yeah, sure, I know the links. I emailed them two weeks before the meeting. I'm sorry if it didn't get to you.
My bad, I'm sure.
That's okay. No, but yeah, that's a very good point because obviously you don't wanna like double, double debt here. I think it'd be worth.
I, I think it's ironic that Caltrans would state there's been no community expression. That's, that's gotta be the irony of that people.
Right. Uh, then it would be worthwhile to, to see where they are and, and what exactly they're planning on doing. And if that is complete, if it's, it's, if it's repetitive of what this plan is or if it's entirely different.
I doubt that they have any specific plans at this point.
Yeah. But what's the ultimate goal? Because this, this was, what was the, what was the nexus of, of this gap project? Do, do you recall like?
Well, there was a design for the entire Los Gatos, Montessorino, Saratoga length to build a project. And I can't give you the details of it, but when bids were received for that project, there was not enough money to build the entire collection of improvements. And so various segments were dropped out. This segment on some basis or other, I don't know about, was dropped out and left incomplete.
So before making any kind of move on, on spending more money, it would obviously be wise to know what they're, what they're planning.
So it took me a second. I just Googled it. It says District Four Pedestrian Plan for the Bay Area, twenty twenty-one. And if you go to the bottom of the page, it says, um, so there are contact people who we can ask about their plan and what are they proposing. And it says initiate projects and it has a link to story map. Where you're gonna zoom into the map and see the Montesina and what are the proposals. So this is the whole Bay Area. And you see it's marked orange and orange is there.
But we don't know what they're gonna do with that.
No, but they have contacted the nation so we can ask what they're working on. I guess it's obviously not available for the public. They just, um, okay. So, so it goes from downtown Los Gatos to Kita Road and then you know, the further towards Saratoga.
Okay. Really nice to know what exactly they're planning to do. Are they just repaving it? In any case, uh, I think well then it makes sense to is there, I mean, is there a time limit on this? I mean, is there like, is there a time that we have to go, yes, we're gonna do this? What's, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at?
It's a good question. Our consultants inquired of Caltrans about submitting for the ER project or process. And I believe the understanding expectation is that they will be continuing to submit to Caltrans following the last review session. But I say, you know, the and I think the, probably the more direct issue is if we don't re, refund the BKF project, they're obviously not gonna do any more work on it. So the question immediately in front of us is, does the city wish to fund BKF? Right now, the information I have is that city manager is not inclined to pay from this year. But an unbudgeted additional seventy five thousand or commitment additional seventy five thousand dollars. If the commission recommends to the council that those funds be appropriated now, the process be continued. Uh, I think that's information that council wants to hear. If that's not your desire, in the contrary, should be represented to.
With the consul, with the consultants now, what Caltrans is doing with respect to the entire highway nine project? Would they be able to assess that?
No, good question. I don't know. Um, one would think that's the case.
Yeah, I think it's really important to know what kind of overlap there may or may not be. And whether or not this can be done in conjunction with.
And this item can, can be continued to your next meeting and I can get some answers to your questions that you have asked.
That would be great.
And follow up on that latest links.
Yes.
See what we can find out about the Caltrans budget.
Okay.
I, I tend not to believe in Santa Claus or the Easter Bunny or Caltrans doing anything. But that's just me and maybe I'm wrong. I would love to be wrong if they're in a place to actually do something.
So listening to discussion, um, I guess the question in my mind arises. Well, one is, is Commissioner Nazarova's point and Commissioner Chaitan's questions were really on point. I think that enough would cause me to pause on, on approval. And I, I don't know what our ability is to go back next year for an O-Bag grant. But what I'm wondering is, if we were to, to pay for BKF to finish whatever work they were doing, would that mean that we would have the ability to, over the next ten years, whenever we had the money, do this? Or will we then still have to go through another process?
I think that's what we asked before, right?
Caltrans encroachment permits have a time limit, so they have. Years, I'm sure.
Oh, is it ten years?
No.
It's within.
Oh, within, okay.
So I think six, eight from Sunday, yeah, we should not today approve that and it makes sense to postpone this travel meeting.
We'll continue, yeah. I think that's a good idea. Uh, no, I think this was just informational, right? I think you were just looking for what we can do next step to continue to the next meetings or pending further information regarding Caltrans project. Well, you see, did I open this to public comments already?
I believe you did.
Okay, thanks. All right.
I think one more comment.
Yes.
Similar events have come up in the past and Caltrans has just always been a big mystery that we can't figure out how to deal with. And I just don't know how to move beyond that. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or ideas on how we can move beyond that.
Well, I suppose we can be like Arnold Schwarzenegger and take care of ourselves.
Turned out not to be a pothole.
Oh, it was a gas. Sometimes I think you're getting pushing us to the point of doing it on our own, but of course we can't. If there were other avenues, I'm sure we would pursue them.
Now, emails listed on the conference website regarding of this pedestrian plan for the area. We can probably know people who are in charge of that on. The questions that we have.
Great, perfect. Well, thank you for bringing that.
And I found no details where they said that local government didn't reach out to them. The proposals, etc., to the readers here on that plan.
That's remarkable.
So here is the rule and they mark all the points that they want to fix along the highway nine. Now, all the crosswalks that we've been talking about and you can click on. For example, the cross that which crest avenue that we've been trying to fix and it says. Was location and they identified as the need through the local public engagement, you know? And if you click on the whole highway nine. Include the need identified by the local or regional government or agency, no.
Okay.
And the website is in U H F, they they, not the website, the plan, they updated it the last year. At the end of last year and they're still working in twenty twenty three. They still have new things like that.
Thank you for pointing that out. I think that's definitely something we need to look into and rectify with them. But thank you. We're gonna move on to the next.
As I say, the irony of the decade, after all we've done and said, the people that Steve personally lobbied. In in the legislature and all sorts of people who went on Caltrans answers. Remarkable.
Okay, moving on to item number five. Report from safe routes to school program. From their April fourth board meeting.
Cheryl, thank you. The commission has in recent times indicated interest in and support for the safe routes to school program. And I felt it would be of interest to you to see their agenda and their action plan to see. So you could gauge whether what's going on in that group is consistent with your thoughts for the safe routes to school program. So there's the agenda from the last board meeting. I'm the representative for the city at that meeting. Participated in that meeting and heard the discussion. Of their proposed plan for the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions from commissioners? No. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, hands are raised.
All right. Any other comments?
Our measure B money is well spent as far as I can tell.
Certainly looks that way. All right. Well, thank you very much. Moving on. So, please, can I ask you a procedural question?
Yes, go ahead.
I had, I told Commissioner Natalia that we would entertain her. Comment about the bicycle master pedestrian plan. I always get the acronym correct. And I wanted to have you let her have the opportunity to share with us what her potential changes were. Can I go ahead and do that now? So I'm trying to figure out how do we adjust?
Yes, so I've never actually had this experience. As you know, I'm newly city clerk. And seeing that we don't have our city attorney attending these meetings, this is the process that I'm, you know. Under the impression that this is how it goes, you you typically, you know. If you wouldn't have taken a motion in action, I think just for further discussion, I think that would have been appropriate. To then bring back again at towards the end, you know, of the meeting for further. Discussion on it, but this is my understanding as of now. I don't know if you. If you'd like, I can perhaps reach out to the city attorney and see if she. Would be able to, you know, answer my email and see if this would be appropriate.
Yeah, that would be great. So I'm thinking we can listen to the to the suggestions and maybe make a motion to add those. And so if you if you could, that would be great. I just want to make sure.
You know what? I I will reach out to, I'll try to reach out to her and if not, I'll also reach out to a. City clerk colleague just to verify, but if you want to go ahead and move on to the next part, you know, that's something we can maybe come back to and I'll let you know.
Please, yes, and then come back to this at the end.
Chair, could I suggest something that might be easier is that we could. Decide at the next meeting to both review those changes and listen to her.
Okay.
Comments and then that would be our common agenda.
Yes, yes, okay. If that if that's if that's suitable, we can do that.
That's actually, yes, that sounds very perfect. If you guys wanted to bring that back still with it to see the changes and then at that point. Again, open it up for discussion and if there's anything else you guys want to direct, you know, stock with. That could be happened to as well.
Chair.
Is that okay with council with Commissioner Nasserova to be able to bring this back in another meeting?
I just want to clarify, so if everyone will approve my suggestions, they will be still added to the. We we can still add them to the plan, right?
So what, so right now we're just taking in what was. The action that was taken, what was the motion that was taken and what is being suggested is that at this point that item has been closed. No further information being added to it. It will then be brought back at the next meeting. With the changes or the the things that were added to for review and it opens it up again for discussion. To allow you to to discuss what you wanted to say. Changes you wanted to suggest.
That makes sense.
So, Chair, I was just wondering if in order to make this a little quicker. If it might be possible to hear Commissioner Nazarova's comments and actually for us to. Re- hold a comment, make a decision and have it all. Contentioned upon the city attorney approving the process and if not, then then any motion to make would would be. All void.
Can you hold that thought just for a moment? Let me see if I can try to reach someone.
I'm concerned that the Brahman.
Yes, yes. I think at this time, this is the appropriate action laid out for us. What I would like you to do is I would like you to email. Our city engineer your suggested changes so that we can have those in advance, that he can have those in advance. Any questions, any other questions you may have so that we can be better prepared at the next meeting. That that is my opinion. Okay. Great, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. We'd like to welcome our new commissioner, Omar Pila Walla. Welcome. Thank you for your service.
Appreciate being on a mission with. Several other very intelligent or articulate people and. Seems like you all do hard work and do a good job, so I think this will be fun. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to it. Okay, all right, moving on. This is the big the big ticket item here, discussion of the twenty three twenty four streets related budgets.
Thank you, Chair. Included in your packet is a staff report that intends to. Bring information about the budget process to the commission. And to provide information, preliminary information, I need to emphasize preliminary. From a staff level concerning revenues and potential expenditures. For the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating and capital budgets. As I mentioned previously, the recommendations for capital improvement. Projects in the category of the pavement improvement program come from the. Cities Pavement Evaluation Program, specifically Dave Avenue. The south half of Greenwood and at least a portion of Constitution. What remains to be seen are is the estimated cost of these projects. And the schedule issues, particularly with respect to Dave Avenue, which if. Renovated and remarked would have to be done when school is closed, which is. June ninth or something like that to August fourth, so it's. Rapidly approaching and has discussed with Chair Hall or the. Likelihood of getting that project pulled together in time for this summer is rapidly diminishing. What I would recommend we do have is look to other streets that. Are recommended in our pavement evaluation program for treatment. Getting within the target three hundred thousand dollar a year. But so my goal in presenting this is to solicit from you your thoughts and recommendations. As to particularly capital projects, the operating expenses are. Much less discretionary and are proposed on at a level based on recent experience. Which actually, as we learned this winter, can vary substantially. So it's really a discussion of. Streets that are candidates for pavement improvement. Both of the the gap project is shown as not funded next year for construction. For lack of knowing any source for that, the other project that's not shown for construction. And is in a sense on the list is the, what's called the Dave Avenue neighborhood ribbon project. It's really Bruce Vista and Poppy, which has been designed. But the costs for which have the revenues to support those costs have not been identified. The neighborhood street improvement projects in the past have been funded principally from general fund. So again, if it's your recommendation that we pursue that project, we carry with it a recommendation that council that they. Appropriate general fund money for that project. With that introduction, I'd be anxious and interested to hear your thoughts and comments and kind of answering the questions that. Might come from this document.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna open it up to commissioner questions. I'll start. I'll start this way and go that way.
So do you know how much Bruce would cost and what is the B C I on Bruce? How critical is that? Spent high on this for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, the pavement itself actually is, well, it's unique. It's all. It's not in the better condition, for example, it's constitution. What has been substantial deterioration. What's probably the leading cost item in the Bruce Vista Poppy project are the concrete gutters. Reestablishing the geometry of the street between those gutters and even putting a five foot. With the asphalt on the outside of those gutters. That's the basically the design for Vista and Bruce or at least portions thereof. The estimated cost, if I'm recalling correctly, is about a million six hundred thousand dollars. Based on the design that was completed in mid twenty twenty two.
Our anticipated revenues are dropping pretty. Like four percent or something. How how comfortable are we with that that number that they're dropping that much?
Well, the primary declines are that developed in the first half of this year, development had slowed down. Fees associated with development have reduced, including our road impact fee. Which is collected as a percentage of the building permit. Fee, so some of those numbers are reduced. Because of that slow, what appeared to be a slowdown in development, which. Again, it can be unpredictable, but the with the economy where it is and so on, the question is. How much development are we probably going to have? Early indicators are not as much as the previous year, so that's why some of these numbers show decline.
I can also add that in in the last several for a few years, since we annexed that property, building permits that were up. And so we were, our revenues were higher because of that project and so it was anticipated anyway that it would it would drop. So I think that's probably what we're beginning to see.
The other impact is again, the. Gas tax based fees. Are reduced due to reduced mileage and the disincentive to driving. Gas cost and that sort of thing. Again, I, no, nobody gave me an economics degree, so. These are best judgments that can be brought to bear in the case of a couple of them, like S P one. Those were numbers that were projected by my judge, such are she being a lot smarter than I, I would term them.
And none of the, none of the street revenue revenues come from eighty four ton property taxes, right?
That's correct, except when you get down to the table which shows general fund subsidy.
Right.
Then that's when we start.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open it to the public. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, hands raised.
All right, thank you. Back to commission. Okay, so I think at this point, we have a conservative estimate on what the. Projective revenues for our commission of the roadwork. Is and so I think the ask is to identify based on the numbers, what projects make sense that we could. That we could recommend to council and given with your inputs, there's obvious ones that will not make the cuts. You did mention that constitution is in terrible condition and so I'm wondering, you know, if. We should try to prioritize projects that we can in fact get done. With the hope and expectation that grant funds will come in later at a later date for some of these bigger projects. Is there any, what can you tell us about constitution vis a vis Greenwood? I mean, I think the Bruce Vista Poppy one clearly is very expensive and that's that's gonna be a hard sell to council. And so we need to get something done. So tell me about Greenwood, Constitution. And then, of course, the Dave's Avenue project.
The Greenwood segment proposed for next year from Greenwood Lane to the end is in quite poor condition. Major alligator alligator ring of the pavement throughout its length and what's called for there is a grind. And overlay of two inches in depth and I strongly urge that that be accomplished based on the condition. And the traffic up there is fairly light, with not a lot of construction, so it's not getting some of the more impactful. Trap loads, but it is in poor condition. Had we had the money last year, it would have been done as an alternate.
And what and what and this is listed in as a short term goal in our master plan, correct? No, it's not. No, there's something about Greenwood in there, but this is different. Okay, what was the cost of this?
Don't have the precise number at this point.
And tell me about constitution.
Constitution has been gradually developing longitudinal cracking along its length. And much of the length of pavement is. Not, what would you say, undrivable? They're they're not puddles. That's not the mode of failure that's going on there. At this point, the. Easterly, I would say two hundred feet had a very hard winter. The culvert that takes water actually all the way from Seabree, which is at the top of a hill. Comes down constitution to a manhole at the end and then outfalls into a creek. That culvert had gotten crushed, closed. And so the outfall in that area was bubbling up through the manhole cover. Or actually lifting the cover. So maybe, right, so. The pavement in that area is in very poor condition. That's what I would call the minimum Constitution project. One property that just developed in there is constructing concrete curb and gutter along its frontage. And that's something that Constitution lacks. And for lack of that, the longitudinal cracking tends to happen. The asphalt is not contained by. Concrete borders, if you will. So that the particular resident there indicated he was volunteering to rally the neighborhood to create an assessment district to. Have the entire street get curb and gutter as he has. That was a noble. A noble act on his part. How successful that would be, I don't know. But it did trigger one item that's in the staff report and that is. A a possible source for improving neighborhood streets is a local improvement district. And the experience that I've had with that is that you have to get a design done and a cost estimate and then you will portion. What the cost of each fronting property owner, what their share is. You conduct a vote of the fronting street property owners and if the majority votes to do it, then the council can proceed. Otherwise, the project is done on arrival. The. One thing that we experienced when I worked at the city of Sunnyvale was. The city actually, instead of. Selling bonds in New York and going through all the cost and. Process that you do to sell bonds, official on the market kind of bonds. City Sunnyvale actually used their reserves to finance the district and then collected annual revenues. For principal and interest from the property owners. And so it was a locally funded local assessment district. That's an option that Monstrino could investigate. The advantage is you save, you avoid the two thousand dollar an hour bond attorneys in New York. And and a number of other expenses by by being your own bank and collect getting paid back by fronting residents.
I have a question about and wouldn't a bond require a bond measure?
If you sold, no, not in not in in a citywide election sense. It it would be an election of property owners that front on the affected street. So it's a limited scale election of impacted properties. Or I think the term actually is benefiting properties.
Well, I think we've had, we've had improvement districts before. We had the lighting district. So we if these are not uncommon, this is not a new thing from Monstera, so I think that's a very interesting idea. I'm sorry, new kind of question. Did you want to ask the question?
Ask another question. Along Constitution, it seems that. There's cracking entire length of utility lines that go underneath.
There is that also, yes.
And is that.
Including the recent storm.
Well, is that a result of simply just the conditions are such that no matter how. The the film was put where the utility that I put in that it was going to crack or is it possible that it was not. Done in the manner that it needed to be done?
Well, what's what my observation of what's happening there is the longitudinal joints of the trench. Have reflected up through. Opened up in a sense. And of course, it's now sprouting vegetation, so it's quite visible. To to see those that trench line in certain areas. I think that's a combination of factors, but but what hasn't happened, the trench hasn't settled. So the. Back drill and compaction and the other measures taken to restore that trench had were had were fun. It's a lateral opening of those cracks that's taken in what I've seen taking place.
The reason I'm asking is it's simply that, I guess, it's utility company that opens up the road, puts down their pipes or replaces pipes, closes it up and. If if they not. Done the work the way that they're supposed to, would they possibly be on the hook?
Yes, absolutely. My mention of this Blanchard, the C Click Fix Report is a case where PG&E is being chased by your straining. The only problem on Constitution is the trench that's most offending is one that the city constructed. We're sure that's out of luck. We're on the hook. A storm drain was installed, there's coming down Seabree and then. Turning right, heading down the hill on Constitution by the city, I guess. A number of years. I don't have the history on that, but. The good news is that the storm drain is now functioning. We spent time effort in getting the outfall restored. Section replaced. It actually had two attackers. One was a bulldozer that drove over the end of it. During the construction of one of the homes. The other was a sycamore tree. Became very thirsty. It got into the pipe at two different locations in a really unusual way, but it created a giant root mass inside the pipe, so. But we replaced that section of pipe and told the sycamore to knock it off. The. End section is now functioning acceptable, so. There there are a couple more steps. The my predecessor actually had the. Coal sac area of that street redesigned. It's a poor design and drainage is not what it should be. So. We would be building it in accordance with that. That design when we did that, the repair of that easterly two hundred feet or so. Thank you.
Okay, well. It sounds like in your expert opinion that Greenwood Road is in the most dire need. And then it's Constitution. Those are the ones that we could feasibly do. Vis a vis timing and with available funding from the city.
Yes, and what was done last year and what I would propose that we be doing this next year is bid. Certain streets in a base bid. And then have others as an alternative, so that if prices come in favorably. We have money to add in additional work. We have numbers from the bidders for that additional work, so. As we move ahead toward developing the bid documents. Final design information and so on for the street improvements, we will examine having add alternates. And if an additional street becomes a candidate to decide Greenwood and Constitution because. The engineers estimates we will be obtaining indicate they're wanting to do that. I will report back to you, but. Target is to have a three hundred thousand dollar. Project collection move ahead. In addition to that, we have to hire an inspector to do compaction testing on the asphalt and other. Things to be sure it's done properly, but. So it's three hundred plus, some overhead.
Sure. Well, that's great, because I remember on council, we had when Natalie and Dina were done and Claire. Is it Claire, Claire?
Yes.
It was presented to us as all three. But we were able to break it into like two different projects and lower the price. So I like that idea of being able to get the big picture and then. Kind of disassemble it if we need to.
Yes.
And know what our options are. Great. Okay, and I would also recommend to council. Talking about improvement districts, local improvement districts and see how we can move forward with something like that because. Over time, I think it's important to have that additional funding force. You just the the structure or the capability of establishing one. Is we're gonna have to maintain these roads and these projects are, we're not gonna always have this funding perhaps for these capital projects, so how can we. Kind of make sure that that's something coming in, especially when you say S B two funds can be. Dwindling with the use of electric vehicles and things like that. I mean, I think it's nice to know what our options are and how we can capture that. And you also mentioned something about. Oh, you know, I know that our trash haulers have the vehicle impact fees. And you had mentioned something to me earlier about. A new program that we might want to get in.
Yeah, I don't want to get out ahead of my out of my skis too far, but there is that discussion. And investigation underway. I need to meet with Steve and kind of go over some of the facts, but. In fact, other cities have in the past and are continuing to collect road impact fees through the garbage. Collection, the refuse collection program. A new program is starting and and Monstera has opted out of those in the past. A new program will be starting July first next year. The city has the opportunity to change its position with respect to that. So again, that's a. A council decision on another non street topic that. Would need to be made. But I mean, if the council chooses to do that, could be some significant funding coming from. At the end of the day, there's no free lunch and your friends and neighbors are paying for for any of that through their garbage rates.
All right, are there any other comments or?
One other comment is the the Bruce area who can't put it off forever because it's quite expensive. Should we talk about? Plan for that? Do we reduce the scope of the project or do we?
Break it apart?
Break the parts or save a little bit of money every year for it?
Well, that's an interesting thing. I I'm sorry that I don't know as much as Jessica do and some of you folks may know about the. History of the other neighborhood improvement projects. And what the current council's perspective is on using general fund money. I mean, there's, I think, a historic debate. How much reserves does the city need and so on? That's way, way past my pay grade, so. I can only say that. In the past, accumulated general fund reserves have paid for those neighborhood projects. The message is I'm getting is don't make that assumption anymore. Now, again, I I'm an interim and I would be history. Not to distant future, so that's probably a discussion for others and and how the council. Feels about that. But again, you can be provocateurs in that regard by saying, hey, council, we think you should do. Something. Again, you may not want to do that. I'm just saying that. It it your your, there was an invitation by yours truly, but I didn't have a job when I came, you know. To represent what your thoughts are through my channels to toward the council.
Well, pardon my issues. I don't, the the previous engineers seem to think all these. Improvements to Bruce were important and needed to be done for the long term. And I don't know if that's. Actually correct.
Only important being a relative term. Certainly, there are benefits to that project, safety benefits, drainage benefits. Ultimately, those accrue to, you know, a better pavement for everybody, but. I would say that the work on those streets is far less critical than either Greenwood or Constitution. They, I mean, any of these streets, one, I suppose, could do a sort of a cost benefit. How many people use it? What's the benefit of that investment? These are the costs and so on. And I certainly have not done that, but. Perhaps perhaps Jessica did. Something what I think there was a pattern. Of doing neighborhood improvement projects. That she was following up on and having the design done was a rational next step in an. Ongoing program of neighborhood improvement project. But frankly, I haven't found. An adopted city council policy that says others are gonna get paid for.
It it's it's from what I can remember, I don't recall this funding being permanent. I think it was to get a lot of our streets out to running condition. That's why I think it's really important that we. Ask council to pursue other funding sources that are that would make sense. That could help us maintain these roads and potentially take care of other projects. So. Just can't expect that money to always be there for this commission, so that would be wise.
I'd be happy to take any specific thoughts, comments or recommendations that you all have. Forwarded in the process.
I'm a little uncomfortable in part that direction because of my lack of understanding of the entire city budget. And. Maybe this money was spending on something else that. Should use for roads. I just have no idea.
Right, well, typically, a city is supposed to have in its reserves, one year's operating budgets are a budget's roughly five to six million dollars. And we are always on budget. We do, we do a very good job of being very conservative, but there are a lot, our biggest piece of our budget is our police. It's over a million dollars a year. So money, we've been pulling it from the general fund and investment, you know, I guess, our our investment fund. So I think it's just prudent that we. Make sure that we have other ways of taking care of these things that we can't possibly always rely on that, because you you don't know if there's gonna be a downturn or whatever. I think it's important just to. To make sure, to seek to see if it's possible to have those other funding sources. We've always had a balanced budget and we continue to fund this, but with a new council, I don't know. I mean, I think over time. How long, you know, how long will this be sustainable?
Well, and I I would interpret what Commissioner Traven just said to mean he's not opposed to investigation of new revenues. It's it's he's hesitant to make recommendations on the expenditure side, not knowing the total call on city dollars.
Oh, that's why I was, yeah, I'm sorry.
But maybe I misheard. I'm not necessarily accurate.
Right. And well, that's why I think focusing on projects, the 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 things that really need to get done, like Greenwood and Constitution would benefit. Our residents more than the Dave's, Pop and Bruce project, because that's more of a. We wish for this to happen, but it's not absolutely necessary. Like, it sounds like Greenwood is in really bad shape. And Constitution as well. And we know that gutters keep asphalt together, so. I think it's wise for us to do what we can.
Well, as I progress development of that this year, next year's. Pavement management project, you will get a report. From the as to what's in there and why and what the money is. Again, the basic target is that three hundred thousand a year. For for pavement work.
And like I said, we did break in, break one project into two because the cost of the price tag is over a million dollars, so we broke it. So it's possible. But yeah, it's that we can't just absorb something like that in one lawsuit.
And I'm not advocating for this, understand.
Right.
You'd understand it.
Right, you know, we'd like for it to happen. We just. Would like the money. I think is that everything? Any other comments? Okay, are you clear then, Don, on?
I didn't hear any specific, other than. Looking for additional revenues is a constant opportunity for council and commission and others. So other than that, I didn't hear any recommendations.
The chair recommended those two streets. I agree with that.
Okay. And you have direction. Wonderful, thank you. All right, that concludes this portion of the meeting. Our liaison is not here, so I don't think he's got a report.
Under this section, I guess I could send the lays on to the.
Yes.
DJD. I can make a couple comments on the meeting from yesterday. If people don't want to hear this in the future, they can let me know. Three major topics. One is icicle superhighways. So they want to build a network of bicycle superhighways. Across, I think they have a vision of thirteen going north and south and east and west across the county where cyclists can go long distances, over ten miles an hour. Was primarily targeted for computers. They have one that's ten percent of the design is done. It's all mapped out. It goes from east San Jose, east of the various of art station. Through the area, the various of art station, eventually hitting the Alameda, then going. Onto El Camino and Santa Clara and to the Santa Clara border.
Wow, now it'll be like.
They'll be separated bike lanes, separated, secondly, separated from car traffic.
Wow.
And Sunnyvale is not participating, so it ends at the Sunnyvale border.
Okay, it's similar to not being.
This is Mountain View and Cities to the North, I believe, are, they have a similar project. This this is more protected and.
Than that.
Than than even a more cyclist friendly than that is, but but basically, everybody accepts unveils. Than even a, a more cyclist friendly than that is. But basically, everybody except Sunnyvale's gonna have some major improvements
Okay.
going across the county in that direction. And so they're, um, they're asking the ETA for it to uh, pay for designing the entire thing. Not, they'll, they'll look for opportunities down the road to build it. So they're only looking for money to complete the design. They also talked about their twenty fifty transportation plan, which to me was uh, very disappointing. It's mainly fluff and do more of the same. They don't have any hard goals. Um, but they're spending a lot of energy doing, doing this uh, twenty fifty transportation plan. We also, this um, committee I'm on also acts as the county bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. So we actually have two roles. And the county is currently upgrade, updating their master plan for trails. And they're looking for input. Uh, and that includes things like a route from Los Catos to the ocean. And it doesn't necessarily need to be something that exists now, but what we wanna be in the future. And so until the end of April, you can give feedback to that plan, make suggestions. They've got one of those maps where you can click on it and make suggestions.
Okay.
Email it in.
Yeah, could you give us the link to that?
Yes, um. If I send it? Yeah. Would anybody else?
You can send it, Don, and we can send it.
Yeah.
Well, it's ETA, but is it?
No, it's county.
It's county?
Yeah.
Well, I can probably look it up.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, they've got a special, the, the link was broken um, that they shared with us yesterday. Otherwise, I would just give it to you or have it written. So I'll send it to Don shortly and we'll send it out right away. Is that reasonable, Don?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Chief, can I ask about the bicycle super highways?
Yes.
Um, super highway makes it sound kind of like a highway, but uh, these, these bicycle lanes will be on but separated from car traffic. So they'll be stopping at stoplights and.
Yes, the, the current vision is they'll use all the same stoplights that cars use. Although they said they haven't completely ruled out some separate traffic control mechanisms. Um, they haven't, there's none of those in the design yet. Generally speaking, it, it'll have the same correct traffic control mechanisms as cars.
I, I actually thought the same thing. I was imagining elevated bike lanes.
Huge chunks of it are gonna be elevated to like sidewalk, like so for visibility and make sure that it's obvious that this is something different. So technically, a lot of it is elevated.
Well, thank you for that. Alright, we have a, a future agenda items. Is there anything that commissioners would like to see us talk about in the future?
Uh, actually, was Boise going to get back to us?
Oh, we already, that we were.
Well, I just, I, I wanna let you know that I did still make an attempt to reach out uh, to the city attorney. Um, but our, there really isn't anybody available. I reached out to actually to uh, colleagues, city clerk colleagues for some reference and again, nobody's answered nor called or texted me back. So I apologize.
No, no worries. No, thank you so much. We will discuss it.
And review it again later.
That, that meeting is in two months.
It's in two months?
Not next month.
Okay. Well, there's no rush to get the plan.
Go please.
We can have a special meeting, I suppose.
Commissioner State Department wants to do it right, not quick.
Right, right. Okay, well, we can always, so the next meeting is in June?
That's my belief.
Okay, okay. Well, that's still before the end of the budget. So uh, okay, um, then any other future agenda items? When, when is the end of the budget? Uh, the budget has to be approved by the committee. Alright.
Can I just ask if, if we do schedule a special meeting? That we make it before May thirteenth, which would be the second Thursday of May. I'm leaving to take my money for vacation letter promiser for two decades.
Of course. Well, we can, we can discuss that if, if we feel we need to have that special meeting up for him. There's, you know. Do, do you think it's necessary?
Boise is the expert on how to do that sort of thing.
Right.
Boise.
I, I like that.
I'm sorry, I'm an expert in what, Don?
Well, the, the commission is considering her um, issue, piece about having, I guess it would be a special meeting.
We can definitely, we can schedule a special meeting if that's what you guys want. I can um, send out an email and just verify the availability for um, a certain date. And if the second Thursday of the month is something that everybody's interested, just because that's kind of how you guys usually meet, the second Thursday of the month, I can send that out and confirm how many uh, folks are available.
I was just saying, that's, that's the Dan gone.
Oh, that's the day you're gone. So before that.
If I can interrupt, Boise, my schedule is um, mutually exclusive with Commissioner Omar's. So one of us will have to miss that meeting if we do a special meeting. So I would prefer to just handle it at a regular meeting and we don't take up extra staff resources, especially since we're struggling to come up with a full agenda anyways.
Right. That makes sense and that still gives us plenty of time. Alright. Then no special meeting. We'll just, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting and the next meeting will be June eighth, June, June eighth. Is that the second? Is that the second Thursday?
The first Thursday is June first.
Okay.
And then June eighth.
Well, thank you. So this meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting, June. June eighth.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, very much. This was great.